The following is a production of KeriTV, the Town of Keri's government access channel.
Call to order the March 14th meeting of the Keri Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Smith for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to remind everyone, this Sunday is St. Patrick's Day. And regardless of our surnames, this is the one day we in America have a bit of Irish spirit in us all. Here in Keri, it's a day we share a common bond of friendship with our sister city in Mead, Ireland, from where yesterday I just returned. It always amazes me how similar we are and how much we can learn from each other. I was fortunate to meet many community leaders in business, government, and education. I heard from local council members of their frustrations with the national government reducing their funding resources, yet mandating more be done locally, yet restricting their ability to do just that. I heard from their business community limiting on how long it takes to get a development project approved and the complexity of the process. And I heard from the community college leaders who are doing a yeoman's task with little funding of providing much-needed skills training so the local workforce can meet the needs of the industry being recruited. Even the personal issues had a common theme. One senior government official, who will remain anonymous after a few pints of Guinness, confided, "I have all this responsibility and authority, and yet do you think I can get my teenage daughter to listen to me?" Sound familiar? I shared with them, or I had the privilege of sharing with them, the Keri way. How we utilize our involved citizenry, our public-private partnerships, and the creative talents of our town employees to tackle similar challenges. And it was also nice to punctuate it all with the recent MetLife announcement. It was a proud day for Keri. Keri is blessed in many ways, including having a diverse citizenry actively involved in our sister-city efforts. On Thursday, March 21st, at the Page Walker Sister Cities of Keri will be hosting the fifth annual citizen diplomacy event. Some incredible speakers are scheduled to appear. And for more information, just go to sistercitiesofkari.org website. Let me close with a traditional Irish friendship wish. May there always be work for your hands to do. May your purse always hold a coin or two. May the sun always shine on your windowpane. May a rainbow be certain to follow each rain. May the hand of a friend always be near you. And may God fill your heart with gladness to cheer you. Have a happy St. Patrick's Day and best wishes to all. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We're now at Agenda Item A3. Is there a motion to approve the, or to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're now at the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. Item B, for the benefit of the people watching our meeting on TV. We're going to take a moment to read our consent agenda items, and one vote approves all of these items. The regular and land development consent agenda items include approval of the minutes, ratifying the resolution granting sketch plan approval for Walton Wood of Keri, and the comprehensive plan amendment 12 CPAO6, the Kiesler property. Councilmember France will briefly summarize our planning and development committee consent agenda, and then Councilmember Bush will summarize the operations committee consent agenda. Mr. France?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item, 3A, lease agreement for 155 Wilkinson Avenue.
Ms. Bush?
Oh, see? Now, wasn't you were so quick? Hold on a second. It's not up on my...
There it is.
There it is. At the...where is it? Sorry. There it is. At the operations committee, meaning we identified several items. The budget amendment request for traffic analysis report, the Holloway Street and Madison Avenue utility and storm replacement, traffic calming project for Trappers Run Drive, the Annie Jones and Morrisville Greenway connection bid award, the discontinuation of the dynamic message sign usage, the bid award for the rehabilitation of the James Jones House, the contract and budget approval for the Keri Community Plan, and the long-range water resources plan.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. We've had a request to pull item B to A as the comprehensive plan amendment 12 CPAO6, the Kiesler property, from the consent agenda. We'll discuss this item at Agenda Item F. Would councilmembers like any other items pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're now at Agenda Item C1. And before we continue with item C, we have several groups in our audience this evening that we would like to recognize. First and foremost, we have the Friends of the Keri Senior Center. If you would give us a wave so the people on TV know who you are, thank you so much for being here. And we have several young men here today. You can't wave, we're going to make you stand up. We have Scout Troop 212 from St. Michael's and Scout Troop 200 from First United Methodist Church. If you could rise so we could recognize you. Thank you all so much for being here, and I hope tonight's meeting will be informative and entertaining, not too entertaining. Back to Item C1. Mr. Doug McRaney of our staff will introduce this item. Mr. McRaney?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Could I have Councilmember France come down to the podium? I wanted to introduce Dan Thomas and Elizabeth Taylor of the Whole Foods Market of Keri, standing behind me, as well as Sal Camerata, our council member, our citizen member of the Parks Recreation...
Wow!
I only had two lines, and I couldn't do it, of our Parks Recreation Cultural Resource Advisory Board. And with that, I'll turn this over to Elizabeth.
I am the marketing team leader at Whole Foods Marketing Keri, and Dan Thomas is, he runs the store. Each quarter, we choose an organization, a local organization, to donate 5% of our sales to for, from one day out of that quarter. As a company, Whole Foods is committed to donating 5% of our sales as a whole company. And so how we do that locally is we, organizations apply and we vote on it as team members so that we're really behind it. It's what our team members are passionate about, it's what our community needs. And the Relief for Recreation Scholarship came to us and wanted to apply, and we were all behind it 100%. So we have a check here. $3,521.
I think it's to endorse that.
Hold on a second, you spelled my name wrong.
Just want to take a minute to thank so much not only Dan and Elizabeth from Whole Foods for their efforts to help us out, but also Sal Camerata and everybody on the Town's Parks and Recreation Cultural Resources Advisory Board for all the work that they do and the time and energy and effort spent on this fund. To give you an idea of just how important this is to our community, last year, this fund provided 69 participants the opportunity to participate in Town of Keri camps and activities that they otherwise wouldn't have had the opportunity to do so. So this year, we've already heard from about 20 families or so that were looking for some assistance. I'm sure that we'll hear more from more. And this awesome contribution will go a long way towards providing a lot of recreation and fun activities for those kids. But I'd really like to turn it over to Mr. Sal Camerata to speak in for a moment, as he was so instrumental in this.
Well, thank you, Don. Thank you also, Dan and Elizabeth. You're going to allow several or many kids to partake in some of our programs that they may not have been able to partake in had you not made this contribution. But I think most of you probably know that our board, we do, this is just one of the many projects we do throughout the year for the scholarship fund. So I just wanted to take a minute to thank my fellow board members for all their work and support on this, of this fund. It's just a valuable part of what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to add to the thanks. Thank you, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Taylor, for caring about your community. And please pass that along to Whole Foods. It's great to have business partners that care about their community enough to not only provide economic or financial benefits, but to come down here to our council meeting. And we really appreciate that, and it's very impressive. So thank you very much for all you do for your community. Thank you. We're now at Item 2, and Ms. Robinson will present the Girl Scout Week proclamation.
If Debbie will join me up here. While Debbie's walking up here, I will show you this piece of history. This was my stash from Girl Scouts. Dug it out of my closet.
It hasn't disintegrated?
No. My mother lovingly stored this for me. Isn't that nice? And as I was showing my daughters this today, you know, it enabled me to recall how enriching scouting was for me and how absolutely life-changing it was. It really was formative in my life. But it wasn't just enriching, it was also empowering. And, you know, I think about it, because my daughters, you know, have so many shirts that say things like "Girl Power" on it. That wasn't even coined back in the 70s when I was in scouting. That was just an idea that we were experimenting with. And I think probably I was one of the first generations of girls that were on a level playing field, where our fathers were saying, "Anything a boy can do, you can do too." And it was through scouts that I learned a lot of leadership. But I learned leadership and how to be a courageous leader, but I also learned about friendship and being a trustworthy friend. And some of my closest friends still today, even though we're scattered across the nation, are from scouting. And so it's such a great experience, and it is a privilege to be able to do this. So thank you so much for coming in today. We are recognizing March 10th through 16th, 2013, as Girl Scout Week in the Town of Keri. Whereas March 12th, 2013, marks the 101st anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Lowe in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. Whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. Whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. Whereas Girl scouting takes an active role in increasing girls' awareness of the opportunities available to them today in math, science, sports, technology, and other fields that can expand their horizons. Whereas more than 3 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 101 years of this American tradition, with nearly 50 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. I really believe that. Okay. And whereas in partnership with more than 10,000 adult volunteers, Girl Scouts North Carolina Coastal Pines serves more than 35,000 girls in 41 central and eastern North Carolina counties, including 1,631 of adult and girl members in Morrisville and Keri. Now therefore, I, Jennifer Robinson, on behalf of our mayor, Harold Weinberg Jr., of Keri, North Carolina, on behalf of the Keri Town Council, do hereby proclaim March 10th through 16th, 2013, as Girl Scout Week in the Town of Keri. And we applaud the commitment Girl scouting has made to support the leadership development of girls, proclaim this 14th day of March. Yay, thank you so much, Debbie. We are so glad to have you here. Come on up to the microphone.
I'm not eloquent, so I can't say anything other than thank you, but what would it be without a box of Thin Mints? Oh, me! Thin Mints actually have the most cookies in a box, so I thought it was appropriate. You could just pass it back and forth.
Yeah, Jennifer will share.
And actually, the mayor and the mayor pro tem got these last year. These are our computer cleaners that we got to celebrate our 100th year of Girl scouting. So there's one for everybody and a few extra. And there's the names of a couple of organizers to get your daughters in troops. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Willis, thank you for your service to the young women in our community and all that you do for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm on my way to our monthly area leader meeting, and I'm going to read this and pass on your words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to Item 3, and our next item is the Tree City Award. And Mr. Chris Hurney, management ranger for the North Carolina Forest Service, I'll ask you to join me at the podium for this presentation.
Thank you. Computer cleaner. The school has cookies.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You're up, I believe.
Excellent. Well, as mentioned, my name is Christian Hurney, and it's my pleasure to be here today and prior to your celebrations to Arbor Day, and to present the Town of Keri with its 30-year Tree City USA Award. Keri is one of 72 towns in North Carolina and one of over 3,400 in the United States to receive this recognition. Tree City USA began as a 1976 bicentennial project, co-sponsored by the National Association of State Foresters and the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service, the National Forest Service. The National League of Cities and the U.S. Conference of Mayors are now co-sponsors as well. Tree City USA program is a partnership between North Carolina Forest Service and National Arbor Day Association Foundation. Awards are presented annually to cities and towns that demonstrate a commitment to making their communities more livable by planting and caring for their trees. Keri has once again met the four criteria that this award requires, which includes a public tree ordinance, which is establishing policies for street and park trees, a tree board and/or a city department responsible for the care and management of those trees, a community forestry program with an annual expenditure of at least $2 per capita, and an annual Arbor Day observance, as there was on Saturday, and proclamation to celebrate trees and the many benefits they provide. For a community forestry program to be effective, it takes the support and commitment of the entire community. In Keri, the community forestry program thrives because of the combined dedication of the tree board members, the city staff, elected officials, business community, homeowners, and all the residents who take pride in improving the quality of life for Keri through environmental stewardship. On behalf of the National Arbor Day Foundation and the North Carolina Forest Service, I'm proud to present this award to Keri with your 30-year Tree City USA Award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I could tell you as a town that we are committed to trees, and when I go to speak about the town, one of the first things I talk about in describing the town is our tree-lined streets. And that's what we have in Keri, and we love our trees. I actually had email from citizens this week concerned about a development, "Please protect the trees." And that's what we do. We love our trees, we protect the trees. And you mentioned the Arbor Day celebration, which we're going to have right here at Town Hall. So we're going to be planting some trees, and everybody gets to take home a dogwood tree, if you guys want to come out on Saturday, there's a bunch of people up there, and help celebrate Arbor Day, which we'll be doing right here at Town Hall Campus. So thank you very much for being here, and I look forward to seeing you next year.
I'd see me again on Saturday.
And on Saturday, that's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
While I'm at the podium, I'm going to stay up here and move to the next agenda item. And I'll invite Scott Hecht and Kevin Steed of our staff to join me at the podium. It's now my privilege to read and present the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas, the first Arbor Day was celebrated in 1872 as a special day for planting trees and has grown to thousands of celebrations in communities across the nation each year. And whereas, North Carolina Arbor Day Foundation has established North Carolina Arbor Day as the first Friday following March 15th. Whereas, the Town of Keri has designated Saturday, March 16th, 2013, as Keri Arbor Day 2013, a day on which citizens are particularly encouraged to reflect upon the many environmental, social, and aesthetic benefits that trees provide. Whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife and watershed protection. Whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, and fuel while also helping to beautify our community. Whereas, the Town of Keri has been recognized as a 2012 Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and North Carolina Forest Service, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Whereas, this marks the 30th consecutive year, which we just heard, that Keri has received this special designation. Having first received this honor in 1983, only 15 other municipalities in North Carolina have received this award for 30 years or more. Whereas, the Town of Keri, North Carolina, will recognize this distinctive Tree City USA recognition in conjunction with our Arbor Day celebration on Town Hall Campus by providing tree saplings and opportunities for the public to learn about and participate in activities that celebrate the importance of trees in our environment. Now therefore, I, Harold Weinberg Jr., mayor of the Town of Keri, North Carolina, on behalf of the entire Keri Town Council, do hereby proclaim March 16th, 2013, as Keri Arbor Day 2013. And I encourage all of our citizens to join in the observances of planned events proclaimed this 14th day of March, 2013.
Real quick, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just, it's very evident as you drive in and around Keri to notice the greenery and the tree-lined streets, as you mentioned earlier. And I think it just goes to show the support and commitment that council has shown over the years. Having said that, part of that commitment, I just would not want to not recognize this man here. The credit is so much due to him. It's Mr. Kevin Steed. He's our town arborist with our Facilities Division in Public Works and Utilities. Kevin has been instrumental and responsible for our Tree City USA program for well over nine years. As the ranger said earlier, there's a lot of criteria associated with that, commitments that we need to make, and requirements for us to maintain that status. And it's clearly Kevin that keeps us on track with that. So with that being said, my heartfelt thanks to Kevin, and again, thank you to the mayor and council for your continued support for this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I want to thank Kevin. Kevin, you going to say a few words?
I'm good.
No, you're good.
Speaks for the trees.
I'll tell you what, if you show up on Arbor Day, I know that last year, I not only got advice from Kevin about planting trees, but I was asking him stuff about grass and everything else. This guy's full of knowledge, and I'm glad you worked for us in Town of Keri and served your community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both for all you did. Thank you. I got to find my place.
See, it happens.
Yeah, it does. We're now Public Speaks Out. That's Item D on your agenda. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic that is not a public hearing this evening. We have the public hearing listed on the PowerPoint slide. Thanks for holding the comments for the public hearing. I'm going to enforce the three-minute time limit on all of our speakers to be fair. There's a timer located on our podium, which is highlighted right now. It's going to be a green light for the first two and a half minutes, and at two and a half minutes, it will turn to a yellow light. And at the end of three minutes, it will flash red. And at that point, I will interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. And I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to the guidelines we have set forth. At this time, I'll open the Public Speaks Out portion for anyone who would like to speak on a topic that is not a public hearing. And I would invite the first speaker forward at this time.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Glenn Neiman, and I ride C-tram. And I find myself reluctantly becoming something of a transit activist. Last month, I sent an email to the county commissioners regarding the proposed half-cent sales tax for transportation. Last week, I received a response from Commissioner Sullivan from District 4, which is not where I live, agreeing that there should at least be public hearings and public input on this matter to decide whether to put it on the ballot this fall or not. In this regard, I would like to ask three things of the town. First, I would ask the town to encourage the commissioners to hold such hearings by offering to host one or more of them. Second, I would ask the town to coordinate with the other regional transit centers, if such hearings are held, to put notices on the buses, major stops, transfer points with the times and locations, and possible transit routes for transit riders to get there. And third, I would ask Keri to take the lead in coordinating with the other transit systems, if these hearings are held and they're in the evening, to extend their operating hours so that transit riders can attend, have their voices heard, and get home again. One of the problems with the short hours is most transit riders are effectively blocked from participating in the kind of decision-making processes such as this. As the last survey showed...
Thank you. I would invite the next speaker forward at this time.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Carnegie, and I was before you on January 10th. I represent 47 homeowners in the Wimbledon subdivision. And first of all, we'd like to thank you for removing the Kiesler property request from the consent agenda this evening so that we could have this opportunity. We have not changed our concerns at all, and you have those in writing from us, so I won't go over them again. We decided as a group that I would speak this evening. There are several homeowners here tonight, but that we would focus our thoughts through my comments by way of thanking you. And then introducing Stephen Spisato. Since the January 10th meeting, we felt like it may be better to hire a professional who could better focus and express our position. So I'm really going to turn our part this evening over to Stephen, and he is here for that presentation. We had emailed it to you ahead of time. I sure hope all of you received it. But thank you for your replies to us and for your help and assistance in explaining the project. Mr. Smith spent almost an hour with us last night in helping us understand, and this was right on his return from being out of town. So thank you for your responses to us, and I'll turn it over to Stephen.
Good evening. Thank you. I've been introduced and certified-
For the record, could you introduce yourself again, please?
Yes. My name is Stephen Spisato.
Thank you.
Certified planner, assisting concerned neighbors in Wimbledon. I want to begin by pointing out that the current land use designation for the Kiesler property is LDR to MDR, not LDR and/or MDR. And this shows that the intention of the plan is to transition residential intensity away from Wimbledon toward US-1. The proposed amendment requests a blanket approval for office and institutional, O-N-I, with no mention of transitions. And we have provided, as Sin indicated, we have provided materials that have established a sound planning basis to deny the request, most notably that the intensification of a nearby activity center, which means that the land use plan is working correctly, should not be used as the primary justification for moving land use intensity nearer to low-density residential. And at the very least, I think all parties agree that Wimbledon is a vibrant, low-density, single-family neighborhood, and that a proper transition is needed along the common boundary with Wimbledon, and that low-density residential may not be ideal directly adjacent to US-1. If there is consensus that O-N-I is acceptable, then the council can express this sentiment and still deny the request on the basis that the proposed designation is too broad. An additional option is to table the request and direct the applicant to work with the neighbors in good faith with the understanding and directive that some O-I may be acceptable to the town. The applicant then can communicate to the marketplace that O-N-I is acceptable with certain limitations, and then return to the town with more detail as to actually what they are proposing. On the other hand, if the amendment is approved, a future applicant, a future applicant, can submit a condition zoning request that is highly intensive, stating that it's consistent now with the town's official land use plan. Again, if the amendment is approved, the future applicant can start at the very highest level of intensity, and any reduction on their part makes them look like they are working toward a compromise, when in fact, it's really putting the neighbors on the defensive. And I think the important part of this as well is that only the applicant can offer conditions at this point. The town and the neighbors are not able to offer reasonable conditions to ensure compatibility with the Wimbledon neighborhood. So I think the bottom line for the neighbors is that a blanket O-N-I designation puts the neighbors and the town in a weaker position-
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt you.
And we just asked if you deny or hold the request. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other speakers for public speaks out, I would invite the next speaker forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. My name is Ian Henshaw. I'm a citizen business owner in the town, and most recently was the chair of the Technology Task Force. And I had the opportunity this week to attend the Sunshine Week, or Sunshine Day, put on by Elon University and coordinated by our very able town clerk, Sue Rowland. Really good information. And one of the neat things, there's an app now for sunshine information. So if you want to know anything about open meeting laws, you know, what the rights and responsibilities of citizens and town leaders are, there's a lot of good information here. And one of the things that, you know, we recommended as your task force was that the town become a leader in some of the legislative items. And the first speaker that was up here today was talking about the difficulty of some residents to be able to come to Town Council meetings and give input based on issues like disability and distance. And one of our recommendations was just that, an idea about electronic meetings. It was something that was trialed during the Technology Task Force. We had some. And it would be a great extension to even our council meetings, where people from the western part of Cary, people with disabilities, people that are homebound, can actually participate and give input into the Town Council. And I think that would be a great leadership role for the town of Cary to take on, to push the boundaries, if we have to, of open meeting laws, and be able to give a lot more citizens the ability to give input to council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I would invite the next speaker forward for public speaks out. Anyone else for public speaks out?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Bill Daniel. I realize this is not a public hearing. I just wanted to respond just very briefly to one of the earlier comments that was made in the public speaks out. It's regarding the comp plan amendment, the requested comp plan amendment. And the concerns that have been addressed, and all of the statements that were made previously, just seem to ignore the fact that the rezoning process and the comp plan amendment are two totally separate things. The comp plan amendment is the first and logical step that will provide the assurance to a developer, not that the use will be included, but that it can be considered. There is so much in the way of protection in this town, in the philosophies of the board, the provisions of the LDO. Listing that on the land use plan as a possibility allows a developer to include that in his palette of colors when he's painting that land use plan. And I think that's extremely important to, I thought it was quite frankly ludicrous to say, turn the CPA down, but give a little reason, say, well, we're going to turn it down, but we would entertain it later on. The CPA needs to be approved on its own merit. If you can't justify CPA change on its own, standing on its own, you should not be able to justify the CPA change based later on on the specific plan you're bringing. The CPA change is based on conditions and appropriateness. Any specific use can be redeveloped. The CPA is bigger than a specific land use plan. And I just somehow wanted to make that point. I think it's very important. Once the CPA plan is approved, all of the concerns have been addressed at the neighborhood meetings, at the public hearings, the things that you've all heard, the things that we've heard, will be addressed. They'll be addressed with very detailed planning and brought as a proposal, not as a development by right, but as a proposal. And hopefully, the developer would be able to convince this board and the Planning and Zoning Board, which approved that CPA unanimously, that it is a very responsible and responsive plan. But thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for public speaks out.
I'm Lim Carnegie, 102 Lyndle Court. The bottom line is a blanket O-N-I designation puts the neighbors in town in a weaker position to ensure equality in product, transfers leveraged from existing homeowners to vacant property contrary to the plan. Therefore, the neighbors respectfully request that the council deny this amendment and table it until a more detailed plan is offered. And I'd like to thank the council very much for their consideration, for allowing us as citizens and homeowners to have an opportunity to comment on this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker for public speaks out.
I'm Lim Carnegie, 102 Lyndle Court. The bottom line is a blanket O-N-I designation puts the neighbors in town in a weaker position to ensure equality in product, transfers leveraged from existing homeowners to vacant property contrary to the plan. Therefore, the neighbors respectfully request that the council deny this amendment and table it until a more detailed plan is offered. And I'd like to thank the council very much for their consideration, for allowing us as citizens and homeowners to have an opportunity to comment on this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker for public speaks out. Anyone else for public speaks out? I see no one. I'll close public speaks out. And we now move to public hearings. Our next agenda item is public hearing for the Cary Park Medical Office Development Site. It's reference number 12 SP 036, and we're happy to welcome contractual attorney John Silverstein to the table with us. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must have been administered an oath by our town clerk. And if you haven't been, now's the time to have that oath administered. And we'll pause for a moment to allow those individuals who have not been sworn in to do so at this time with the town clerk to my right. And while that's going on, I'm going to go down the table and ask council members if they've had any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, or specialized knowledge, or close relationships to an affected person to disclose, starting on my right, going to my left. Mayor Pro Tim Akot?
No, sir.
Ms. Robinson?
I have not.
Mr. Smith? I have not.
Nope.
I have not.
I have not.
There are none. I see no one moving to be sworn in at this time. So we'll open, well, now there's a procedure point I have to make. If there's anyone who has an objection about a council member participating in this hearing, now's the time to speak up or move forward. Seeing no one, I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing, and Mr. Hales, Kevin Hales of our staff, will introduce the sitter, Mr. Hales.
Good evening, council. As you indicated, the first public hearing tonight is a quasi-judicial hearing on Cary Park Medical Office. It's a development for approximately 16,500 square foot medical office located in the Cary Park area of Cary. Also includes consideration of an alternative to construction of traffic mitigations identified in the traffic study, and an increase to the maximum parking numbers allowable on the As I mentioned, the property is located in Cary Park in the southeastern quadrant of Carpenter Fire Station and Cary Glen Boulevard intersection. Carpenter Fire Station Road, which defines the northern boundary of the site, is identified as a thoroughfare on the comprehensive transportation plan. Cary Glen Boulevard, which is not actually adjacent to the site, there's a small strip of land in between it, is identified as a collector. There's no existing transit, C-Trans, or other in the area. No improvements identified in the Parks Recreation and Culture Resources Facilities Master Plan. It's currently vacant. The property to the south is also vacant. It is in the Cary Park PDD as well, and it's identified for future multifamily development. As a matter of fact, that plan, we just did a pre-application for approximately 200 units on that property to the south. Carpenter Animal Hospital is located immediately to the east. A portion of Cary Park subdivision is located north of Carpenter Fire Station Road, and the Courtney Reserve Apartments on the west side of Cary Glen Boulevard from this property. There are no stream buffers or floodways that would impact development of this property. The property is currently within the Cary Park PDD, is identified as part of the town center. The TC portion of that Cary Park PDD is identified for up to 30,000 square feet of commercial or office uses. Most of the zoning around it, as you can see, is also the Cary Park PDD, with the exception of the property to the east, which is Carpenter Animal Hospital, and zoned O-N-I ICU. As I mentioned earlier, the property is currently vacant and wooded, predominantly hardwoods with small areas of pine. There is an existing overhead power utility that runs along the frontage of Carpenter Fire Station Road, which is a transmission line, and would remain in place during development. The proposed plan proposes a 16,500 square foot office building located on the western end of the site oriented parallel to the Cary Glen Boulevard frontage, not frontage, but area. Access would be modified for Carpenter Animal Hospital to provide a shared access, creating a new private street that would run north-south and provide access to developments farther to the south, the future apartment complex directly to the south, and a townhome development, which was recently approved as a mixed-use sketch plan or mixed-use zoning, which is currently in site plan review as well farther south. Stormwater is handled through underground systems underneath the existing or proposed parking. Landscaping would be consistent with LDO requirements and the PDD requirements for the streetscape. The building is designed as a two- or three-story split. It will have a three-story appearance from Cary Glen Boulevard behind the 30-foot streetscape buffer, two-story appearance from the parking lot, and a two-story appearance from Carpenter Fire Station Road. It's predominantly buff-colored brick with light gray siding accents and dark bronze roofing and an accent for storefront. One of the big reasons we're here tonight is the applicant has proposed to an alternative to actual construction of a mitigation identified in the traffic study, which was done for the property. One of the mitigations, the only mitigation which was identified in that traffic study, was signalization of Carpenter Fire Station Road and Cary Glen Boulevard intersection. Under recent LDO revisions, the applicant does have the option to come to council, send the plan to council, to have council consider the alternatives. And what they've requested is that council consider a payment in lieu of construction of that improvement. Should be noted that the amount that they are proposing to provide does represent less than 100% of the construction costs, and they are working with the developer to the south, Crown Partners, on the apartment community to do some cost-sharing proportion. And that's a private agreement, so I didn't get involved, or we haven't gotten involved with that, how much each one's going to pay. One of the conditions we're recommending for approval of that alternative is that that payment be made prior to signing of the final master plan set for the development. Second request or modification they are requesting is an increase to the maximum parking allowed on-site. The LDO requires parking for office at a rate of one space per 300 square feet. The parking table does recognize medical office, which this is proposed as a separate use. However, the ratios are identical for both professional office and medical office. Under the LDO requirements, it would require 55 spaces. The applicant is requesting 66 spaces based on the nature of the medical office use and the higher turnover that tends to be experienced with that type of use. What they're proposing is 66 spaces, which works out to approximately one space per 250 square feet, which is equivalent to a retail establishment parking ratio per our LDO, and represents approximately a 20% increase in the maximum allowed parking on-site. So that concludes staff's initial presentation. Just a reminder that council has three separate actions that we're being asked to take tonight. The first would be the payment in lieu to the actual construction of signalization at the intersection. The second would be the increase to the parking maximum. The third would be action on a development plan. And each of those has its own unique set of approval criteria. And we prepared slides following the testimony you're going to hear to kind of summarize those criteria in each request as they take them in order. So thank you, and we'll be available if you have any questions following the hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Will Anderson. I'm with the Kennan Craver Firm. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. The applicant's really asking for two things here, as Kevin went over. The first is this payment in lieu idea for the traffic mitigation, and the real basis for this is seeking a fair share arrangement or equitable share as opposed to the inequitable result imposed by the TIA for this project that tripped for a relatively small development a really big expense of estimated $250,000 for that traffic improvement, which is a really big line item in the budget for this project. The second issue that Kevin laid out for you here is this added parking space, and this is really based on the use of this building as a medical office as opposed to a regular office. The ordinance does not recognize a difference in these two types of office, but it's our belief, and we have a professional opinion to support this, that medical office requires more parking and should have more parking because of the nature of the use. I have three people here with me tonight to provide testimony as to the findings that you need to make that are in the packet and that Kevin briefly ran through. The first is Lee Perry here. He is with the applicant and is gonna give the applicant's perspective. In particular, he is gonna talk about the basis for the payment in lieu that they've come up with together with the apartment developer to the south. And then second, Earl Llewellyn is gonna speak briefly about the need for additional spaces with, in relation to the medical parking, medical office parking aspect of this project. And then, third, our registered landscape architect, Scott Murray, is gonna give some testimony, just generally, very briefly, about why the site plan is in conformance with the ordinances to hit those last few findings. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to turn it over to the first witness, Lee Perry.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Lee Perry. I'm a development director with East West Partners, who, we own the property and have put forth the development proposal. As Will mentioned, as part of this development, our traffic impact analysis indicated that a new signalization of the intersection would be required as a result of the development of this 16,500-foot office building. A project this small cannot really afford an off-site expense to that level. So when we kind of started going through, you know, how we might mitigate that or possible scenarios, we started talking to our neighbor to the south, who Mr. Hales mentioned, Crown Partners, I think is coming through shortly behind us with an apartment development, site plan approval. We talked about the fact there would be a signal needed at the intersection, what were some ways we could work together to possibly, you know, see that happen, and we could both move our projects along at the schedule we were on. Based on the general traffic analysis of, I believe it's 208 apartment units in our building, we represented about 12% of the increased traffic that would be associated with those two developments. And so we worked out a private agreement that we submitted to the town for record, basically indicating that we'd be willing, both as private developers, to come through, come forward with a payment for the signal that represented approximately that percentage, with us being 12% and then being around 88% of the estimated signal cost, which I believe is around $250,000. So that equated to the $30,000 figure which has been put forth before you. Secondly, on the parking, for the office medical use, typically based on experience and other comparable projects, ideally, you know, four and a half per thousand is where, you know, those users typically want to be. We are still with the increased parking requesting below four per thousand. I believe it's about 3.96, going from 55 to 65 spaces. The building is planned for a dentist and an orthodontist group who will take half the building, we're pretty certain of that. And then the remainder of the building, we're thinking is gonna be filled with comparable type uses that have, you know, heavy staff that are working there, and then reasonable amount of turnover. So we feel that the parking, you know, increase we're asking for is in line with general industry standards. And then also, we researched some other similar products that had come through in the past few years, and it seemed to be in line with some other park modifications, I guess increases that have been approved in the past. So, with that, I thank you, and we'll turn it over to Earl.
Good evening. I'm Earl Llewellyn, traffic engineer with Kembley Horn &amp; Associates. I'm a registered professional engineer in North Carolina and have been working in the traffic engineering field for goodness, 24 or so years now. So, tonight, I'm gonna be speaking about the parking increase that's been requested. The ordinance, as I understand it, establishes a maximum parking ratio of 3.3 spaces per 1,000 square feet of office. However, as was indicated earlier, there's no distinction between what we call general office or professional office and medical office. The Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Report is one of the widely accepted reports and references for parking demand, and they separate out these two different uses because their demand is quite different. While looking at it in several different ways of slicing and dicing it, basically, what the summary is that medical office typically needs about 40% more parking, has a 40% higher demand than general professional office. And in this case, I think we're asking for an increase of about 20%. If you think about it, that sort of makes sense because general office is driven by primarily employees, some deliveries, but primarily employees. Medical office is driven by employees and patients, you know, a lot of which occur at the same time in the morning peaks. So that seems to job with, at least my experience. Another manual on traffic demand is the Urban Land Institute for Shared Parking. They recommend a 4.5 space per 1,000 square foot rate. Generally speaking, this manual recommends a 4.3 per 1,000 square foot rate. To put it in perspective, the requested 65 spaces that are being proposed here would be a rate of 3.94 parking spaces per 1,000, which we think is substantially below what these documents say, but would satisfy our demand and would make sense. Happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Murray. If I may, I'd like to hand out another version of the site plan. It's not quite as good as the one the staff did, but it does illustrate one important fact. I'm a landscape architect, have been practicing for a little over 25 years, or not to state how much over, but for a little while. Like to review a few of the key aspects of the context of the proposed development, specifically the Cary Park Plan Development Plan that identified this property for office uses. It was approved at that time for this use, approved for more square footage than what is being proposed. And at that time, the justifications were made for the adjacent uses, which to the north is a single-family residential. The adjacent property corner on the northwest side of the intersection is proposed for another office use, Courtney Reserve to the west of the property, and the multifamily to the south, and veterinarian to the east. One of the key things that is identified in the site plan that you have is a green area that extends beyond the southern boundary. At the time, because of the depth of this tract, the buffer was proposed for the multifamily development to the south. And so there's a 30-foot buffer that will be on that property that complements this proposed development. Similarly, along Cary Glen Boulevard, there's a combined width of 30 feet of a street yard that makes up the buffer to the west. We have a 30-foot street yard along Carpenter Fire Station Road, and a 30-foot landscape strip to the east along the area of the veterinarian. In that sense, it is in context with the master plan, or is in keeping with the master plan. The proposed development is in context with the surrounding uses, the two-story building that's proposed, we believe complements the corner there, enassing of the corner, and giving that an architectural edge, but is consistent with the scale of the other uses. We have combined the driveway access and worked closely with the veterinarian office to the east and with DOT to come up with a single point of access. That particular access continues through as a private street, providing additional emergency access and convenient access to the multifamily to the south. So we have the interconnectivity that is all part and parcel of the neighborhood focus area or the, I forget the terminology that's used, but nevertheless, it brings connectivity to this whole intersection in this area. It does provide a second means of way out for the apartment tract as well. Emergency access circulates through the site, it's largely why it's configured the way it is. The parking sits about five or six feet below Carpenter Fire Station Road, so the trees that will be provided along Carpenter Fire Station Road, in combination with the shrubs that will help to screen the parking, will pretty much diminish the impact of any of the parking area. And it serves to, the additional spaces that were being requested also gives us a comfort that people won't be parking along the sides of this private drive that is there for access and emergency egress. In summary, I think we feel that it is consistent with the surroundings. The adjacent development protects the properties there. It's harmonious in the context of the overall development in the intersection in this area. We've provided safe pedestrian egress and circulation through the site, and the private street provides certainly enhanced emergency access to the apartment tract to the south as well as to these two users. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, other speakers?
No, we have no other speakers at this time, but happy to field any questions anybody may have.
Are there any other speakers that have been sworn in that would like to speak in support of this application? Seeing none, I'll move on, and I would invite cross-examination of the witnesses who testified in support of the request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I have a few questions for Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, the proposal before council tonight is solely, I'm sorry, I'm hitting all the buttons on the computer. Kevin, can you fix that? Thank you. The proposal that's before the council tonight is just for the medical office building and not for the apartment complex, is that correct?
Correct.
So, the 12%, 88% potential split of the cost of the traffic signal, the only thing that's in front of the council tonight is your proposal to pay the 12% contribution, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we just wanted to point out to council that we don't know what will happen with the remainder of the payment in lieu at this time because the apartments are not before you. Did you, as the applicant, determine, using your independent judgment, that 12% is the appropriate contribution for your development to install this traffic signal?
I did.
Okay. And in coming up with that 12% figure, did you, did you then, or are you now relying upon any statement made by a member of the town council or the town staff?
As far as coming up with the 12%?
Right.
No.
Okay. And is the 12% rationally related and roughly proportional to the impacts created by your project?
We believe it is.
Okay. And just for the record, we wanted to clarify, who is the owner of the 30-foot strip between this development and Cary Glen Boulevard?
This strip?
Yes.
That's Crown Partners. That property actually goes with the land to the south of us.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now ask for anyone that has been sworn in, if they have any objections to the incompetent evidence or testimony. Seeing, seeing no one, I would, before I close the public hearing, comment portion of the hearing, I would like to ask if either party believes there is additional evidence that warrants a continuance of this hearing. I see no. Now I'd open it up to council members for comments or questions. Ms. Jackson?
Go ahead. May I go first? About the traffic signal, couple of questions. Number one, although testimony was given, that they determined that 12% was the appropriate cost share, I'd like to hear the details of how that 12% was, that number was arrived at. What kind of formula did you use? You know, to me, if you're a little bit in a weak place, because you're asking for more parking because your project generates more traffic, and yet you're saying it's only 12% of the traffic generated, those seem in conflict to me. And then my second question's gonna be about this agreement with the apartment complex that's not before us tonight.
Okay.
Just as a foreshadowing.
Okay. To the first question, and this is back of the envelope, the way we looked at the agreement with the apartment folks was, it was an estimated, I believe, 1,550 new average daily trips to be generated based on the proposed amount of apartments that were coming through, and what we were proposing with the 16,000-foot office building, of which we were in the vicinity, I believe, of 185 of those total trips. And so, again, I guess, back of the envelope, that was where it came out, I believe, is around 12% of the new total trips between the two developments. So, working together, we came up with that as kind of an equitable assessment between the two of us.
May I ask a follow-up?
Please.
So, that 1,550 trips supposedly generated by how many apartments?
I believe it's, I believe it's 207 is what they're currently proposing.
Okay. And the staff report I looked at with this said you were gonna generate, I think it was a total of 153 new trips, by my math.
I'm being, give the nod, that is correct.
Okay. So, a traffic impact analysis has been done for the apartment complex, even though that hasn't come before us yet?
Correct. That traffic impact analysis has been done, and if, Jerry, you want to speak to that? I guess, they're required to be done before the plan's submitted regardless.
So they have done that? And can anybody verify those numbers, since we don't have anything in front of us, and no offense, we're just trying to...
And let me just add, I guess, to follow, when we came up with that agreement, to my knowledge, an impact analysis had not been done for the apartments, but based on, I guess, IT manual guidelines for multifamily average daily trips, we used, I guess, the general estimates of how many trips are generated per unit is kind of how we came up with that math.
Okay.
But, yeah, I can't speak to, I guess, the analysis that's been done now.
And I believe Mr. Jensen may have something to add.
I think it's a good idea.
There was a, there was a traffic study done for the track immediately to the south of this, and they were anticipating apartments, and I believe in the traffic study was 235 units. I don't have the exact figures with me tonight on that, but we are in agreement that the 12% is, seems to be proportional and appropriate for this particular case.
Okay. Thank you. May I ask my second question about this?
Please.
So, I totally understand the part about the apartments are not before us tonight, and you're telling us in good faith that you've had a conversation with this group, but my question would be, is this private agreement, if reached and in writing, binding to the town such that we could hold, and I'm asking anybody who can answer this question, such that the town can then hold the other party to the remainder of that $250,000 to signalize that intersection? So what do we do if we get ready to signalize the intersection and we only have $30,000 versus $250,000?
I can't speak to the agreement itself, but I can tell you that an apartment complex under the day's ordinance of 207 units would be coming to town council, and you'd be looking at mitigation or traffic impacts. So at that point, you would be considering whatever develops there, and it's only identified for multifamily housing. So, that will be coming before council.
Right.
Whether it's Crown Partners, who does it, or someone else.
Or whomever.
Correct. Or until we change the ordinance.
And when would the signal have to go in? And when would the signal have to go in? Would it have to be when that southern property is developed, or would it have to be when these folks get their office building built and it's moved in, or a certain number of trips are generated, and we only have $30,000 towards this $250,000 project?
Well, you would be accepting, and I can let Jerry speak to this or Tim speak to this, but you would be accepting the payment in lieu, in lieu of construction, so.
Right. But only $30,000 payment in.
The town may be responsible for building that whenever.
That's what I was trying to get you to say. Thank you. Tim, you want to speak to that?
Well, again, until we receive the remaining funding, and that plan would have to come through a process where council would have to consider that plan, you would have to receive a similar condition that you would accept, and then we would have to decide when and how we would make those arrangements. You could make it a requirement of that plan if there was an agreement there. There's a lot of different things. We do not have that plan before us. We have received a letter from the apartments below saying they were willing to participate, but that's not binding until the plan's approved. So, it appears there's some willingness, but we don't have the details of that worked out at this point.
Is there less risk to the town to bring both those things at the same time, such that we have an assurance that we have the money to do the signal?
Certainly considering them together. If you want to collect all the funds for the impacts, for the associated traffic, then, you know, it could mean less risk to the town if you consider them collectively. But clearly, you're going to have to vote on one before the other. I don't think you can have them simultaneous.
I understand.
Even if they were the same night.
Just seems like a risk.
And I think from a procedural standpoint, you know, we are doing something totally brand-new tonight, which is using the ordinance that was adopted effective March 1st, where people can ask for relief from the prior roads ordinance. So, just, I know Mr. Hales already talked about this, but they came in before the ordinance changed. They had to do a traffic study, and they are required to do the mitigations. Under our new ordinance, we allow them to come in and ask for relief, and so they're requesting just to be able to do the, what they believe is the proportionate share of their impact at the intersection and pay, you know, their cost and what they're contributing. And our staff agrees that that's an appropriate percentage and an appropriate amount for them. So, that's all that's before you tonight, and it's really hard for us to further speculate on what may come in the future. If that apartment complex comes in at over 100 units, it will come in under our new process now because it has not been submitted yet, and it will require quasi-judicial hearing before you, just based simply on the number of units that it has.
Okay. Can I just say one more thing?
And also, I'm sorry, just also to remember that there is other development in the area, and Mr. Bailey or Mr. Jensen or Mr. Hales could speak to this, but there is other development pending on different corners and different parts of the intersection. So, these aren't the only two developments in the area.
Thanks. I just wanted to make it clear to the applicant, my questions were not a lack of appreciation for your conversations with the adjacent property owner and your desire to bear the cost of this that's appropriate to your impact. I think that absolutely makes sense, but we have to, we're fiduciaries for the town. We have to think about where's the remainder, you know, that we have to hold other people's feet to the fire, I guess. So, thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
You asked great questions, I appreciate the questions that you asked. The one question I want to ask in addition to that is, and it may just be a comment, actually, with the removal of impervious surface, or, excuse me, of pervious surface, to the addition of impervious surface with the additional spots, I would have anticipated that you would have come to us with more trees on the site, that you would be saying we're over-vegetating this because we are taking away pervious land. So, I wanted to hear your comments about the trees and why you're not coming to us with more trees on this site, given the additional spots.
I think that the answer to that is that the site was intended to be developed fairly intensely, which, as you see, it is moderately intense. There are a number of sewer easements. We're picking up what is an existing private pump station that serves the veterinarian office now, so we've had to extend an outfall through the site over to them, an easement. You can't plant trees in that. We've also had to provide the fire service to this building, and there's another easement. And when you start to layer all that on, it makes the site very tight in terms of where you can plant and where you can't. The additional sidewalk through that middle median, which was asked for by staff and proffered by us, we embrace it wholly, but then there's setbacks to the sidewalk, how close you can plant trees. So, we felt that with the 30-foot street yard, by the way, there is a utility easement, so there are medium-sized, smaller-sized trees, but there's twice as many. The 30-foot street yard to the west has existing trees and evergreen shrubs in it, so it's fully vegetated. And then the 30-foot buffer that was put in place at the time of the master plan approval, that 30-foot buffer along the south is going to be fully vegetated. Add to that the 30 feet of landscape strip along the east, and we felt that that was as good as we were able to do. If there's another spot we could plant a tree, we certainly would. But the setbacks to the trees, setbacks to the sidewalks, excuse me, setbacks to the sidewalks, to the curb, to the parking and all, coupled with all of the utility easements, makes that virtually impossible.
So, are you saying that there is a tree in every location that's possible to host a tree?
Every single one I could find.
Why is one of these little circular areas in parking, why does one have a tree and one does not?
There's a fire hydrant there.
Okay.
And there's an easement that surrounds that fire hydrant, and we tried our best to shift it around to where we could plant a tree and still meet the setback requirements to the parking, and could not do it. So, we meet the ordinance with the trees that are proposed, and certainly meets the ordinance in terms of the overall master plan and the landscape strips and buffer yards that were proffered there and approved.
The follow-up question to Jennifer's question. So, because there's a sidewalk through that median interior to the parking lot, that's why there are no trees there, and the reason for the sidewalk is to improve connectivity for the people having to park so far away from the building, Kevin?
Correct. One of the new site design standards we adopted last August was that you provide linear island and provide sidewalk in it. And since that is a private street, we're expecting more traffic, pedestrian traffic up and down from the apartments and from townhomes farther to the south, so that'll keep them from having to walk through the parking lot to get to the building.
So, you have a parking lot, I mean, we have a sidewalk, no trees.
We did have trees there.
Yeah, I get it.
But we embraced the sidewalk.
It was a trade-off, yeah. It's a trade-off.
Ms. Bush?
I have a question. Was the TIA that was done for this particular plan, or only looking at this medical building and the surrounding already built-out usage, or did it include the apartment complexes? I'm wondering what triggered the signalization?
The traffic study was built upon existing development in the area. This was one of the first ones that came in. There was subsequently a townhome project that came in after that, and then there was also the apartment complex. There's also a rezoning going on in the corner of Carpenter Fire Station and Green Hill Church Road. That came also afterward, and all of these traffic studies had a similar requirement that a traffic signal be installed at this particular intersection. So, but currently, right now, the way the study was performed is that they just couldn't achieve a level Service D or better at that particular intersection with their development because there's so much traffic already on Carpenter Fire Station Road, that just making a left turn out of a stop sign controlled intersection is very difficult, and there's a lot of delay associated with that. So, they had to mitigate back to pre-existing, and they just couldn't do it without putting a signal in.
So, this project alone, including the already-built-out developments that are already within the one mile or?
In this particular, it was a half-mile.
Half-mile radius, required the signalization because it was already at a level of Service?
It was actually a Level Service E.
E, okay.
So, again, they weren't adding that much more to the system, but it was.
But it was already.
But again, it was beyond Level Service D, so they have to mitigate back to the pre-existing condition, which was Level Service E.
Okay. Also, I have another question about the sidewalks as we were bringing this up. Are these standard-width sidewalks that's on Carpenter Fire Station, or is there a multi-use path?
It's all standard five-foot sidewalk.
And the potential, and on Cary Glen, even though there looks like they're not building it because that property is associated with the property to the south?
That sidewalk already exists. Sidewalk along Carpenter Fire Station and Cary Glen Boulevard are all existing. They're just turning in the radiuses to come into the site.
Oh, okay. So, those are, they're just leveraging what's already there?
Correct. The aerial photo here is shifted, and you can actually see the existing sidewalk running there on the north.
I was noticing also, there's a little meandering one, I guess, from the intersection down to the entrance.
Yep. They're required to provide a connection from the building to the adjacent public street sidewalks and the private street sidewalks. The reason that meanders is because of the grade difference. It has to be accessible, so it creates more length.
Thank you.
Ms. Yerha?
Yeah, I have a question, I guess, going back to the parking, and maybe Mr. Hales can answer this. Although I'm concerned with the additional impervious surface when it comes to additional parking places, I would be more concerned with the loss of additional trees with the additional parking spaces. Do I recall in the staff report that you'd indicated that the entire site would probably be graded anyway and really wouldn't be any additional trees?
I won't speak speculatively, but there's a lot of topography on the site, and to get the grade in the road, to make the connections, to tie in with adjacent developments, there would be very little existing vegetation saved by reducing the additional 11 parking spaces. You may want to speak to that.
No, I think that's well said. There is a significant amount of topography. As I said, the drive comes in, obviously, at sidewalk grade, but then slopes down slightly to the private drive. The parking begins to descend down towards the building and is six feet or so, seven feet below the street grade. The building was designed where it also has a lower level on the south side where the riser room and the utilities are. All of this is trying to get back to grade at the property line, and I think, we feel it does that very successfully and very tastefully, but the site would be completely clear-cut within the boundaries, excuse me, with the exception of the landscape strip to the east. There's a protected area of trees that will be saved there. The rest of it would be clear. There's just that much grading to be done. And there's stormwater, you know, underground stormwater retention contained, and that adds to that problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Hale? The applicant shared two documents for parking standards. What do we use to develop our standards, you know? I mean.
I'm not sure what we use when we develop our parking standards. We looked at medical office several years ago, probably back in 2007, 2008 timeframe, and at that time, I don't know if we looked at, we probably compared to communities around the country. I'm sure we looked at some of the engineering manuals as well, but it was determined at that time we weren't going to increase it.
I'm not sure I followed that. They have a methodology based on some guidelines, planning guidelines, that say basically 55 spaces. We're saying 65 spaces. What I'm trying to understand is how do we, how do we arrive at the 65?
We say 55, they say 65.
Right, vice versa. Thank you.
And I am simply applying, the town's simply applying the standard that exists today. We just recently looked at, we do go back and reevaluate our parking standards every once in a while. We just did retail shopping centers and retail stores and increased that, or decreased that from 1 to 200 to 1 to 250. So, maybe this is something we can look at as a future LDO amendment, but. And it's not an uncommon request, and it's typically approved administratively by the planning director. The reason you're seeing this one in particular is because it's associated with the request, associated with the site plan, and it's coming to you because of the request for the payment in lieu.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a developmental, development plan question. I'm really pleased to see the shared drive. I think it is much better for ingress and egress of emergency vehicles, but as I look at the parking lot and the way it's configured, and I don't see anyone from fire or police here, but could someone just assure me that there is a turning radius in there for fire truck and EMS? Because as I look at that space between the end of where the sidewalk ends and the front, that looks, I'm not sure how many feet that is, but.
The fire department is very diligent about checking all their turn radiuses on development plans, and that's actually striped as fire lane, I just didn't paint it in there, so.
Okay.
He has measured it and striped it.
I just want that in the record, thank you.
Other questions? Before we proceed with motions, I would ask Ms. Silverstein if we followed all the correct procedures and the process, and if there's anything we missed.
I believe you've followed all the procedures required.
Thank you. This time, the council has prepared motions from the staff report for reference and to any late-arriving updates that staff may have provided to us at our seats. Mr. Hales, I appreciate you now sharing with us the next steps to ensure council takes the necessary action.
And just as a reminder, you have three actions before you, and each slide will be advanced as you get to each action, and each one has its own unique set of approval criteria. So, follow the worksheet, and you should be in good shape.
All right. Who would like to move forward?
I did it last time, what somebody else do?
Can't figure it out. I'll go for it.
Ms. France?
Upon conducting a duly-advertised quasi-judicial public hearing and considering the application materials, testimony, and the evidence presented at the hearing or otherwise appearing in the record, and upon considering the approval criteria of Section 3.23, I move that we approve the requested payment in lieu for the traffic mitigation identified in 12-TAR-348 as the alternative would not result in unsafe conditions for motorists or pedestrians, in unsafe access conditions for emergency services, or in traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project that will not be mitigated. Do I need to go through and find something to fit in the little yellow boxes?
I don't think so, Ms. Silverstein.
Is that acceptable right there?
It's acceptable.
Cool. This approval is conditioned upon the following, that the payment in lieu of $30,000 must be made prior to the signing of the final MyLARS by staff.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. France?
You have a second shot. Upon conducting a duly-advertised quasi-judicial public hearing and considering the application materials, testimony, and the evidence presented at the hearing or otherwise appearing in the record, and upon considering the approval criteria of Section 3.19.1, I move that we approve the minor modification request as the minor modification advances the goals and purposes of the LDO and either results in less visual impact or more effective environmental or open space preservation, or release practical difficulties in developing this site.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. France?
Upon conducting a duly-advertised public hearing and upon considering the application materials, the testimony, and the evidence presented at the hearing or otherwise appearing in the record, and upon considering the approval criteria of Section 3.9.2.1, I move that we approve the proposed development plan with conditions as stated below. Finding that the proposed development meets all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2.1, based on the following findings. Specifically, the application meets the following criteria. Do I need to go through and read all the criteria?
Yes.
Oh, so hoping for a no. All right, and you feel free to jump in and help me out as we go here. The plan complies with all applicable requirements of the approved Cary Park PDD and the Town of Cary Land Development Ordinance, including the development and the design standards of Chapter 7 and 8, as well as the dedication and the improvement provisions of Chapter 8, and as well as all the applicable town specifications except as modified in the previously-approved minor modifications to the said development standards. The plan adequately protects other property from potential adverse effects of the proposed development because the plan generally complies with the requirements of the Cary Park PDD document and the land development ordinance, and the previously-approved minor modifications are not expected to have significant impact on adjacent properties. The plan provides harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties because the proposed development plan is compatible with the surrounding land uses and architecturally consistent with surrounding developments. The plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians or for motorists, and prevents the dangerous arrangement of both pedestrian and vehicular ways because it is consistent with the requirements for street and sidewalk design, take a breath, found in the land development ordinance and the standards and specifications manual. And the plan provides both safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site because it is consistent with the road design standards of the development, land development ordinance, and the standards and specification manual. The previously-approved minor modifications are not expected to have significant impacts on the response time for emergency vehicle.
There's a motion. And a second. Could you repeat it? No.
That is the most you will ever hear me say at this table.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I have one clarification question. Ms. France referred to 3.9.2.1. I want to make sure that's 3.9.2.1 and not 3.9.2.i.
Or maybe it's i.
Or l.
Or l.
It's i.
It's i, so. It's I. So are we okay with the motions or do we need to...
State it.
Yeah, I think that you can, you can have the substitute motion to...
I substitute I for one.
So motion to substitute where he referred to in the three previous motions, one substitute I.
I'll second it.
And the second. Further discussion. Ms. Silverstein, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
One.
Thank you all that were involved. Ms. Silverstein, thank you very much once again, and Mr. Hales and the rest of the staff. We now move to land development discussion items. That's item F and that's discussion of the Keesler Property Conference of Plan Amendment number 12 CPA 06 that we pulled from our consent agenda earlier this evening. This rigling of our planning department will present this item and then we'll hear our planning board's recommendation.
Good evening. This case is a request by Glenda Toppin Associates to amend the future land use plan designation of 32.68 acres located at 1695 Kildare Farm Road. The subject parcel is located on the east side of Kildare Farm Road just as it crosses over US 1. And just to get you oriented here, here is US 1. This is Kildare Farm Road. This is the Wimbledon neighborhood here. This is the Waltonwood Senior Living complex here. This is McGregor subdivision over here. The existing zoning of the property is R40, which is residential with a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. The Cary transportation plan shows that Kildare Farm Road is a major thoroughfare with five lanes and a sidewalk on its east side and a 100-foot right-of-way. Future plans are for a four-lane median divided road with sidewalk on both sides still in a 100-foot right-of-way. Kildare Farm Road is also an existing CTRAN fixed route and please note that there is no access from US 1 onto Kildare Farm Road. This is the current land use plan map for the area showing that the subject property is currently designated for low density to medium density residential. Low density is defined as 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre and the medium density is defined as 3 to 8 dwelling units per acre. The LDR to MDR designation recognizes that an appropriate housing type and density could be found somewhere within the overall density range of 1 to 8 units per acre, single family detached or attached. Within those overall guidelines, the actual types of housing products and density selected for the site will depend on the type of rezoning actually approved for the site in the future. The applicant's request is to add office and institutional as another possible land use in addition to the residential designations already on the map. While the land use plan generally defines office and institutional to include general and professional office space as well as institutional uses such as churches, schools and daycare, the actual final types of office and institutional uses, if any, selected will depend on the type of zoning approved for the parcel at a future date. At the first public hearing before town council, two citizens spoke citing concerns about increased traffic, safe access and egress to the site, height and density of potential development and the possibility of unappealing views. At the P&amp;Z board public hearing, three citizens spoke on behalf, against the CPA, with one of the citizens speaking on behalf of 45 property owners. The concerns were much the same as at the first public hearing, but also included additional concerns such as wetland impacts, drainage, delayed emergency response, reduced quality of life and just generally too much density. One citizen spoke in favor citing the land's limited residential appeal because of the noise from US 1. The P&amp;Z board discussed the case and found that in general, it was a reasonable request. The board showed that they were greatly sensitive to neighbors' concerns and made it clear that future rezoning will hinge on appropriate and sensitive transition from adjacent residential. The vote was eight to zero to recommend approval. In staff's analysis, the following points were considered. The subject property is bordered on its east side by Kildare Farm Road, a busy thoroughfare. On its long south side, the property is bordered by US Highway 1 and interstate. Office institutional zoning exists to the west directly across Kildare Farm Road and to the east of the property is Waltonwood, an existing institutional use. Just south of US 1, Wake Med has recently had a major expansion creating more area traffic and likely increasing demand for ancillary office and institutional space. The subject property must necessarily serve as a transition property between the single family residential to its north and the traffic, noise and commerce to its south. It's very important that the subject property be developed with appropriate transitional uses that don't negatively impact the adjacent residential neighborhood. Staff believes that adding office and institutional to the list of potential uses for the subject property gives the developer added flexibility to create the best possible transitional project. The land development ordinance states that proposals to amend the comprehensive plan should meet one or more of the four conditions shown here. Staff believes that two of the comprehensive plan amendment review criteria have been met. Number one, projections and assumptions for the property have changed with nearby office and institutional zoning, increased noise with the widening of US Highway 1 and increased traffic along Kildare Farm Road. And number two, this amendment offers increased opportunity to make an appropriate transition from the residential development north of the property to the transportation corridors and commercial development south of the property. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the CPA request. And this concludes staff's presentation and we're here to answer any questions you may have and someone here may also, Mr. Swanstrom may be here for the planning and zoning board also.
Mr. Swanstrom?
Thank you for a very good view. You've taken an awful lot of my thunder from him. As you've heard and I think some of you probably even watched the television recording of our meeting, we had a very rigorous and spirited discussion on this item. We very much are concerned about protecting the interest of the Wimbledon neighbors to the north. We also recognize that Highway 1/64 created some unique challenges for this property, particularly in light of the fact that there's unlikely to be any DOT sound debatement measures approved because they don't do that for property that's developed after a highway goes in. And so the challenge here was how do we provide the flexibility to do what might be the best transition here? And I would suggest flexibility here. We don't want something to come forward that is going to damage the residents in Wimbledon. I think you don't either. What we did want to do is have a CPA that would allow flexibility to come up with creative solutions. If those solutions don't protect the residents to the north or don't meet other objectives of the town, we would expect that a rezoning would not be approved. What we viewed this request then is simply giving the applicant the flexibility to come up with a creative solution that we may or may not accept when we get to a rezoning stage. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for staff or Mr. Swanstrom?
No. I wish I just commented.
Yeah, I'll really direct this at staff. Regardless of what transpires here with this vote, when a rezoning comes forward, it will still comply with our public notices and go through the math of being a, if there's a protest, of it being a valid or not valid petition, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that will be determined, you know, has that been determined, like the property that's involved that would make it valid or not?
You mean whether or not there could be a valid protest petition?
Right. I mean, is the potential there based on the surrounding property that...
I think there is potential. We have not looked at the, at the numbers because, as you know, you can't do a protest petition for the CPA, but...
Right. But if, but I'm talking about if the rezoning...
The rezoning, yes.
Okay. That's helpful to know.
Can I elaborate on that, Laura?
Right ahead.
Questions? When calculating valid protest petition, would you calculate US 1?
I need a little help. I don't think so, no.
I'm seeing no.
That's right.
And could you put, put the map back up that you had earlier? Well, actually the map right there will work. And so if you exclude US 1, and I'm just estimating here, it looks like you'll have more than 20% and I believe that is the criteria for a valid protest petition?
I believe it's 20% of the...
I'm looking at Jeff.
Properties within 100 feet.
Yes.
It's difficult to say right now.
No?
That polygon.
It's hard to say, but 5%?
Yeah, I thought it was...
I thought it was like 20. Okay. Very good. Continue.
The message that I heard from the community, this is in my district, the message I heard from the community is a concern in the process that by moving forward with the O&amp;I, it's kind of not making the playing field level, you know, as a project or a development comes forward. And, and that's the biggest concern that I'm hearing and the overlaying that was the argument that I think the gentleman in Public Speaks Out was, was trying to get to. And, and that is that, I don't know how to say this. If they have the right to, do they have the right to come forward? If we did nothing with this, if we just tabled this, do they have the right to come back and just request a rezoning for O&amp;I anyhow? That's the point.
Yes. Yes, I do.
So, so the question that comes up from the residents and the citizens over there is, this seems like an extra step that all it does is overlay an unfair advantage. And candidly, I overlooked having a discussion about the protest petition process when I, when I was meeting with them as a, as a potential of providing balance, you know, in the give and take. And I just wanted to make that, that point to all of you here. The net of it all, there's a lot of arguments that, you saw the emails. The net of it all is it's a step that adds, in their opinion, adds no, no value to the process. If, if the applicant has a very good plan, as the P&amp;Z board mentioned, that has that flexibility and that mix to protect them, it'll come up in, in the rezoning process and that's where we should be deciding on that and that there's no need to put that flexibility in at this point. That's, that's the message that I'm trying to convey from the meeting the other night.
Okay.
Does that make sense, I hope?
It did. It raises a lot of questions. So I had asked this to be pulled from consent, but I'm guessing I'm not the only one. I'm guessing everybody, most people wanted it pulled from consent for a lot of reasons and most, the strongest of course is because the neighbors have voiced such strong concerns about this, both about what might be built there, but also the process. And I knew we all wanted to honor that and to have a conversation about this rather than just approve this perhaps on consent. But before I get to the things I had planned to say, I wanted to ask a question about what you just raised, Mr. Smith. You know, in the five or so years that I've been on council, I can't recall a time where we had, and so I'm looking to staff to help me with this, you Jeff, is have we had a rezoning come forward that wasn't consistent with our comprehensive land use plan? Because what I'm hearing Mr. Smith say, and if that's true, that's really interesting because the staff didn't say anything about that alternative, is that the land use plan doesn't have to be amended to add O&amp;I if the applicant wanted to come forward later and through rezoning ask for it to be O&amp;I. So help me with that.
We can't remember one recently or whatever, but that's always an option that somebody could choose to submit a rezoning that doesn't mesh and match exactly with what the land use plan calls for. But usually, knowing then what would happen in that discussion, well, now you're submitting a request that doesn't correspond with our plan, why are you even here in front of us? And that wouldn't be acceptable. Most applicants, as they talk with staff and we suggest ways to move forward, we'd say, you probably need to test the waters first and get the land use plan designation in line in advance and then look at a rezoning. But that's always a possibility that somebody could say, you know, we'll look at...
So it, so it's not out of order, but it gives an applicant stronger footing because it's more process driven?
Sure.
That your rezoning request complies more consistently with your land use?
Which is one of the tests that you will apply at any point during a rezoning evaluation anyway. So sort of setting it up in those stages, just like the rest of our development process. From plan to zoning to development plan, you know, getting the ducks in a row, if you will, in terms of the land, overall land use plan designation and getting a general sense that, I mean, the question here is, is it appropriate to plan for this variety of uses in this location on this property? Well, I'm close. Now the burden then moves to the, come in with a rezoning request that really, that really illustrates and, and shows that now you are meeting our plan. And I think as Mr. Swanstrom, Swanstrom said in terms of the planning board, and I think council said the same thing at your public hearing, you know, the, the expectation will be elevated that any proposed rezoning request really has to address the issues that have been raised in this plan amendment process.
I appreciate that. I think Jennifer had a...
I was just going to say that my recollection from the early 2000s is that we often had projects come to us where we were considering the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning within a short timeframe that for a while...
Pretty much at the same time.
Yeah. I mean, that used to be a common practice when things were kind of hopping, so...
To save time, I guess.
Yeah. So I guess it's not unprecedented.
And that's something we...
But I think...
I believe we talked about that at the retreat, at your latest retreat as a process step and agreed that, you know, kind of doing it the way we are or that they could be close together is okay. And normally you get both at the same time and that's why you see the public hearing on a plan amendment and a rezoning kickoff together. The rezoning sort of parts ways for a while while the plan amendment moves forward and then if, if changed, then that rezoning would correspond. In this case, they decided, let's change the plan in and of itself and then, then we'll come in and follow with a rezoning later on.
I appreciate that. I didn't want to get sidetracked on, oh, they should have done it a different way because the issue before us is whether to amend the land use plan or not. So that's what I'd like to speak to. I think the staff has done a really great job in evaluating this. I watched the P&amp;Z meeting twice so that I could capture all of their statements. You know, I want the neighbors to understand that, and I think council members have brought this up before, a gentleman in Public Speaks Out brought it up, Anna, you brought it up in your presentation to us is that this truly is a first step. Rezoning is where all the action is. That's where we say yes, no, this is okay, it isn't okay. And I just want, I ran a few numbers to try to help me with this. And that is, as I read through the staff report, I see that Wimbledon is developed at an average unit per acre of 2.7. It's called MDR and it's got some HDR in there, but it's predominantly MDR. It's not LDR, is my understanding predominantly. Is that right, Anna? I mean, it's got some LDR in it, but...
It does. And it has a mix of lot sizes.
Right.
And it could be considered under our current gross density, low density.
Right. Because of things that were happening at the same time in 96 when we were doing the land use plan, I believe is what the staff report said. If we don't approve the CPA and this goes forward to rezoning as LDR to MDR and LDR is what's approved, it would have a low of 32 units per acre. All of us know that's not going to happen. And a high of 98 units per acre, which is three units per acre. If it developed at the same average that Wimbledon is at, it would be 88 total dwelling units. And if it was at MDR... And if it was at MDR, it would be anywhere from a low of 98 units, which is three per acre, to a high of 261. I don't think anybody in Wilmington would like to see 261 homes beside them. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but that's pretty, it's medium density, but it seems high to You know, as you look at the logic of this versus the emotion, which is what I'm trying really hard to do, I would just like to reassure the neighbors that if you've watched us beyond this case, if you've watched this council in the last 12 months beyond this case, you will see that we have denied several zoning requests that were unharmonious with the surrounding neighborhoods, that were too dense for the land around it, that were not a good fit for Cary, and we have no hesitation to do that. So I'm going to support the CPA because I think that's where the logic is. I actually believe that as you look at this map and you think about the transition from this beautiful residential neighborhood to US-1, and you think about the noise and the fact we won't get a noise wall and all those other things, you think, who wants to live along there? That having some O&amp;I in there, not blanket O&amp;I, as somebody made a reference to in Public Speaks Out, this is an addition, not a replacement, that it could provide some good transition. And it's going to totally depend on what the rezoning request looks like before us, and if we believe it does a good job. And if it doesn't do a good job, I have no doubt that we will not approve it because we have a record of not doing that. And that's basically everything I wanted to say. Thank you.
Ms. Yerha?
I've tried for weeks to convince myself that O&amp;I would not be a valid use for this site, and I have failed. I think criterion number one, a change in projections or assumptions, I get stuck on that. I really think there is a change in this area since 1996. Better or worse, maybe it shouldn't have changed like it did since 1996, but it has. And I really think O&amp;I is a viable potential use for the site. Following up on Gail's numbers, I did some numbers, too.
I hope they're not in conflict with mine yet.
No, no, they're going to be a little different all right between, since this is low density to medium density, it's unlikely it's all going to come in at low or all going to come in at medium. So even if you split the difference, half low and half medium, and I doubt that that would ever happen, just assuming it's low to medium, it's going to mostly be medium. But if you split the difference and look at the maximum numbers, you're still talking 190 units. And I really think certain office and institutional uses would be a lot less obtrusive than 190 residential units on this. I can't get away from that. But of course, I'm going to be picky with the rezoning, too, just like the rest of us. And I guess there's three reasons. One is, I want to see as less harm to the trees on this lot as possible. We're talking trees tonight, we had Arbor Day, et cetera, so I bring up trees a couple times. It's wooded right now, and I think it was just, was it our last meeting where we talked about some environmentally sensitive areas here where we didn't want to put the road through from Waltonwood? I think that was recently, right? So there is some environmental issues here, and I certainly would not want to see any environmental deterioration more than would have to be at the time of the rezoning. And here I go with my historic houses again. I really want to see, and Anna's sympathetic to that, I think, certainly want to see every effort made, that this house is preserved when a rezoning comes in. And of course, most of all, is what we're talking about here tonight, I don't want to see any adverse effect to the Wimbledon, the neighborhood. So I think we're going to be really picky when this comes to see us again. But at this point, I just can't convince myself that O&amp;I should be out of the mix.
Other comments?
No comments.
This one kind of reminds me a little bit of the office project we dealt with a few years ago of a Killmead. You know, folks were very hesitant to accept office, but the developer did some really neat things, worked with the community, heard their concerns, and came back with office buildings that were residential in design and style, limited in building heights, and basically looked like houses. I mean, so to me, there's an opportunity here. I'm not too caught up in the process issue because to me, if I'm a developer, before I go spend a bajillion dollars on paying land planners and architects and everybody else to design a rezoning to go through the process, I want to know that the council is at least willing to consider it. That might make people feel like we're being favorable to developers, but that's not the case, I can promise you. One of the speakers even, actually, it may have been the representative, even said some O&amp;I is acceptable. I wrote it down when he said it. And in the statement that it puts neighbors in a weaker position, I just don't agree with that at all. I think the ball is in your court. You are in a position of power. You have the power of the protest. Bottom line is, if you, they don't develop a proposal or something that you like, you protest it, it requires six of the seven people sitting up here to say yay. That's a really high bar. Does not happen very often at all, I can promise you. But to me, this basically gives the applicant the opportunity to explore other options. Heck, they might find out office doesn't work. They might come back in with a lot of office, it's residential in nature, that would have no nighttime activities, no weekend activities, that might be less of an impact to the surrounding community than residential would. But it gives them that opportunity to come back and wow us. And if they don't, we say no. I mean, we've said no.
A lot lately.
A lot.
Did you put our money on this?
And councils before us have said no. That's how Cary has developed into a fantastic, world-class community. We're going to ensure that Wimbledon is protected. We're going to ensure that there's buffer and transitions and we hear you loud and clear. But the rezoning is the time in the process when we iron out the details. At this point, I just look at it and I say, yeah, I'll consider it. And that's what we're doing, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a shout out to the folks who've come here and have been quite diligent at their emails and reaching out to us. I think you've done what you need to do. And I believe all of us on council, we empathize with your situation because we are dealing, every time we get a rezoning now, with infill. Right? And so you probably did what we all do. When you built your house, you said, oh, well, there's, this is going to be LDR to MDR next to me, you know, it's, Wimbledon is a great big subdivision. I feel comfortable building here. And now, potentially, I got the impression that you feel like we're throwing something in the mix, and I don't want you to feel that way. I think we all here feel the need to protect the people who came here first, right? Who have made the investment in the community, who've built their houses. And I think what you're hearing from all of us probably ad nauseam now is that we absolutely hear you, and we want what's best for your community, just like you do, just like if we lived right next door to you, because we do. So I hope you're hearing that from us.
I'm the only one that has any chance. And I want to be real technical, just to try to explain, because I know all the emails were a little bit confusing. If we approve this, you can build low, medium density, or office. But the current zoning says low density. That's all that can be built if nothing else changes. To change that, they have to come to us and ask for a different zoning. If they do that, you will be notified. And if you meet the criteria for a valid protest petition, then it takes, as Mr. France pointed out, six out of seven of us to approve. Some of us have policies that if the protest is reasonable, will never vote against a valid protest petition. So it's a tremendous bar, as Mr. France said, to beat a valid protest petition. I think that's where you sit right now. I think this land development amendment's going to pass, but to get it rezoned is going to be really difficult, and they're going to have to listen to you because you'll be in the driver's seat, and you can say, no, that's not good, try again. No, that's not good, try again, until it meets what you're looking for. And I think that's where you are. So you have more power when we get to rezoning than you do right now. So, and I'm kind of echoing everything, but I wanted to summarize that. Jack, if you have other...
No. Do you ever get the feeling you're driving the wrong way on a one-way road?
I've driven with you, yes.
Yeah, I don't know. It killed me once. Were you driving in a car or a golf cart?
Both.
One, I'm really comforted by the comments. I think that's very reassuring, and I hope that the message gets out, and I hope that the people in Wimbledon listen to it. Again, when I met with the folks, I did not bring up the power of the protest petition. I just flat forgot. And what I was trying to do, or what they were trying to do, is for me to understand and to convey to you all is the fact that they just, in their harder hearts, believe that it's a more level playing field. I think you've, you know, you've explained that there's, that playing field may move, but it's still a pretty, they're in a pretty good situation. So I, you know, I just appreciate the comments I've heard from all of you. You know, they've asked me to convey that perspective. That's what I'm doing. And yeah, I'm going to, I represent them, you know, respect their requests, but I do hope that they're listening and they're hearing because I think you're going to, you have a lot more influence than you think.
Okay. We vetted this pretty well. Anybody ready to do a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve 12-CPA-06.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, Mr. Edelman.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda we have this evening. If there's no other business from council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Visit the Town of Cary website at townofcary.org.